Okay, it's six o'clock and I've called to order the September 11th, 2012 meeting of the Acton School Committee. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I have one brief one. I'd like to have a brief executive session in regards to personnel at the end of the whatever that goes down.
So you need a motion.
I have a motion.
A motion to go into executive session after new business.
I'll second it.
Regarding MSRA. Get it out.
I haven't got my paper yet here. I gotta find my paper.
There you go. MSR-1, MRS-A-4056A.
Yeah.
Four five six A, okay. Okay, all those in favor? Let's move on to the approval of the school committee meetings from August 21st.
I'll make a motion to accept the school committee meeting minutes as written.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as printed? So signify. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Okay. Any correspondence?
Yes.
Okay.
There are significant changes coming down the pike as we have spoken before with respect to main school law. And what I'm gonna do is distribute the most current descriptor of those if you'd like to take one and pass it on. And while you're passing for the audience and for the staff that's here, the major pieces of legislation that we're gonna be dealing with this year, no surprise to anyone, our teacher and principal evaluations, restraint and seclusion practices for students, with students, by staff, Freedom of Access Act. And I just wanna take a little detour. Kevin, there's a requirement in main state law that new school board members log on to the main school management site and take a training in Freedom of Information, Freedom of Access Act. And if you give us a call, we can give you the login and they send you a certificate when you've completed the training. It's about an hour and it's just a requirement of elected officials.
No problem.
Okay?
I'll contact you.
There's also new laws around procedures for student expulsion, not that you guys deal with that too much, it's mostly at the high school. And obviously, new legislation is coming down in terms of bullying, especially cyberbullying and the use of electronics. So this is for you to peruse at your leisure. As you can see, it's dated September 10th, so it is literally hot off the press. And that is, I believe, what I have for correspondence.
Glad to see you printed these out because I just got these today on my computer and I saved them but I looked at them briefly but I didn't print them out, so. Any other communication?
Donna printed me up. Is this the same thing here?
Yes.
She gave me all these. I mean, I thought it was one big-
You just have to make sure that it's the September 10th.
This says August 12th.
Yeah.
Drummond and Woodson.
Yeah, use the September-
Well, they explain it. But Drummond and Woodson explain the changes, so I mean, that's good to have.
One comes from MSMA and the other one comes from Drummond and Woodson, so.
They're for the different policies, each one. Believe me.
Yeah, it's-
You need both of them.
Yeah.
That's what you-
No, I know, but I-
So that's all I have for correspondence.
It's the same, but they're all just-
Okay. Motion? Motion to accept all the correspondence.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to staff reports, superintendents' report.
Okay. Opening of school, to start with, from my perspective, no problems encountered whatsoever with the cameras or the security system. So it was off to a very smooth and quiet and familiar start, so I think that went very well. Being familiar with a larger school system, an opening day, and tears and tantrums, none. It was the smoothest school opening that I have ever seen. Congratulations. It really was.
It was the whole effort, all the staff.
No surprises, no surprises in terms of students showing up that we didn't anticipate. We have had an increase in the number of students who are being homeschooled, and I will be able to give you a better count in October of who is legitimately being homeschooled, who's homeless in living in Acton, and who is living in Acton to help with elderly parents or help with other situations. So I'll report more about that. And I said a future agenda item clarifying the difference between being homeless and being in the provision of assistance to elderly or handicapped people. I met with David Cody today and the chemical hygiene annual training will take place next week.
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's good. We'll be all on board with that. In terms of the vision and strategic plan, I want to thank the hard work of Carlene and the staff. There's been an increase in the REAP funds, Rural Educational Achievement Program, that will fully fund the contract with Mary Jane McCallman, who will be our consultant for the strategic plan and the visioning. And there may be even some extra money for some specialized staff development projects in order to support people as they make that transition, so I'm really excited about that. We had a question about staff participation in school committee meetings, and I would offer the following consideration. And all I want you to do is think about this. I will get it to you in writing when our minutes come out, then we can talk about it formally in October. When students are engaged and honored in school projects that involve the community or wider than just Acton elementary school activities, we should make every opportunity available for public recognition. And when we have that kind of presentation to the board, which is what I think is probably what you want, then we would ask staff members to go to Tricia and Betsy to say, you know, is this an appropriate item to put on an agenda for a school committee? So those special students with special recognition and special projects is what you want to focus on. Otherwise, what you're gonna end up doing is you're gonna create competition among people about who's gonna be seen and who's not gonna be seen, and you don't wanna go there. So you wanna set some parameters around, and I'm saying, start with students who are working at an honors level, who are being honored in the community, multidisciplinary projects. Start with that, see how that goes, and then we can expand from that. So that's just something to consider. We can put it on the next agenda and talk some more about how that would work. But it really needs a gatekeeper, and I would welcome the opportunity to work with Trish in order to be able to do that. And in terms of job descriptions, I wanna commend the work of the policy committee for outstanding effort in the draft of job descriptions, which I believe you folks have received.
Can I reach you out for the rest of these?
So this is a draft, capital D, capital R, capital A, F, T, draft. And what I would like you to be able to do is to get to us with your observations, with any questions or concerns that you have, any clarification that you may have around these points as well. The other thing is that we really need to consult with staff and just share it with them, see what kind of questions or concerns, what kinds of issues they may have. It's not a meet and consult as it would be in a policy. This is sort of a meet and reflect. And any changes that they may have, I will bring forward to the folks that have worked so hard on those job descriptions to see, you know, where they can be incorporated, where there may be some problems. And we can begin approving these in October.
All right, just clarification, in case you're seeing red and black and crossouts. The, we had an EdTech, for instance, job description that said EdTech 1, 2, 3, and they do different things, so we had to separate it out. So now you'll see, I took the same draft, the same copy of the job description we had, and tweaked it for Technician 1, Technician 2, Technician 3, for what they actually do from job descriptions handed to me through Joy. And that's, wherever you see red, it's new, you'll see the crossouts, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Good point.
The teacher is brand new, that's why there's no red. Mike's position, brand new, so you won't see red. We didn't have a job description for him, and now you might soon. And so that's how it goes. If you're missing any, I don't know.
The one that we have to work on is nursing.
We don't have it. I told, I asked her to get to look into that for me because we don't even have anything for that.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if we had to have something for the cafeteria workers because it goes through Holly.
Right.
I know you sent me that one, but I don't know, do we need to have it?
They are your employees, so technically you can have the job description.
Because didn't it just say cook?
Yes, that's all we have now.
Oh.
They call them cooks.
Okay, because I found three old ones. One was cafeteria worker, one was, I don't know.
The cafeteria worker is the person who used to work nine to one, was the half-time person at the position.
So right now, we just hire cooks.
We have two cooks.
There you go.
Okay, so we will-
And that's what Holly calls them?
Mm-hmm. So I would welcome your input. I'll get it to you folks any point in time, and we should be ready to meet again as a policy group to look at job descriptions. I wanna make sure that staff understands and that the audience understands that job descriptions really aren't policy, they're really regulations. Because you, as a board, always want the flexibility to be able to review the current situation, if you have a vacancy, and say, okay, now in 2013, how is it the same and how is it different from the job description that we adopted in 2012? So you always want that flexibility, and that is your right as a board to add, to change, to modify. But it would be the responsibility of the superintendent to talk to the staff and say, here's what people are seeing, here's where people think there need to be some changes. What are your thoughts?
Now, isn't it contractual? You said it was in the contract that they are supposed to go over the job description, so what did you say?
There is something in the support staff contract that says that they have to see them within 30 days.
When they're finalized.
Any changes?
When they're finalized.
No, with, any change, anytime there's a change made or, you know, that thing, but it's in the support staff job description on page 19. I don't have a copy of it with me, but we'll get Jeanette to look it up. Page 19, there's a section on job description.
Perfect timing.
So please don't hesitate to email your comments and-
So two clarifying questions. These are the job descriptions for all positions?
Except cafeteria.
Unless I miss somebody. The nurse and cafeteria. The cook.
And when would you, if we have feedback, when would you? Dates work for me. Do we have a date?
You can start anytime if you wanna go home and read them tonight and start doing it tomorrow.
When's the next meeting?
Next meeting is October 9th.
So by October.
Well, if we're gonna be ready to vote on them on October 9th, then I would suggest that you get any changes into Betsy at least a week before that.
So it'll be October 4th, that Thursday before any board packets are put together, so you wouldn't want any, that would be the deadline, but you'd want them in before that. All right, so maybe October 2nd.
October 2nd.
Yeah, so that way, if anything has to be typed or printed out or whatever, you've got time to do that.
So October 2nd for changes.
October 2nd for changes.
By October 2nd.
Any input, right.
And the legal and ethical duties are attached to each job description?
Okay. So this is what-
What does it say?
On page 19, it says, "The committee shall provide a current written job description which describes the job responsibilities for each job classification covered by this agreement. The association shall be provided with copies of all job descriptions of employees in the bargaining unit within 30 days of the execution of the agreement and whenever a job description is modified."
So basically, it's just notifying them and giving them copies of it according to what you just read.
Correct.
Making sure they get copies of it.
Making sure they get copies of it.
And what I'm saying is, is to be fair and above board, is to give them an opportunity to ask questions about it.
You don't have to take their advice, you don't, you can disagree if they say, well, we wish you would, but, you know, if you get their input, you're possibly hedging any
Any grievances.
unforeseen issues that you could have just talked about or explained why it is that way.
Yes.
So is that gonna happen before the night?
Yes, I'm gonna meet with them within 10 days.
We'll meet with Betsy.
Good.
Okay, that's all I have under job descriptions.
Especially because the teacher's new, I mean, I wanna make sure we have the right stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
So once they're adopted, then within 30 days, they'll be distributed?
Mm-hmm. Right. Basically, that's what the contract says, correct?
Shall be provided with copies of job description.
Provided with copies within 30 days. So that would be within 30 days from the time that we vote them in.
Vote them in.
Right.
And just a reminder, on October 9th, which is your next scheduled meeting, at 6 o'clock, we have a workshop scheduled, that's hard to say, with Roger Kelly from Drummond Woodson. And the purpose of Roger's workshop is, A, boardsmanship, obviously you are new, we could all stand a little review in terms of, you know, conduct and what's appropriate and, you know, how to get your point across and not get a grievance. But also, what are negotiations? What can be negotiated? It isn't a negotiation session.
Right.
It's training in boardsmanship and training in negotiation.
You said that was the 9th at what time?
The 9th at 6:00.
Okay, the regular board meeting.
Are you calling it a workshop?
Yeah.
So the school committee meeting won't be until?
It'll be immediately following. And I have copies of this document for you to read in the meantime.
Is this what we just got?
No.
What you sent me? I'll copy it.
Electronically, yes, that's a hard copy.
Yes.
And that will conclude my superintendent's report. Okay.
Yeah.
All right then, let's go on to the principals' report. Board members all have this?
Just board members.
It's only for the board. Principals' report.
Okay, well, as Betsy said, the start of school has gone very smoothly. Ryan Pease, who was hired at the beginning of the summer as our office minister secretary, has found that the calm of summer is followed by the rapid, sometimes chaotic, overwhelming, noisy start of school. She has been fabulous, just handling everything fabulously. But, you know, we've got the buzzer system, we've got the phones ringing, we've got last-minute registration of students. Bus schedules have been an extreme challenge. They were not done in time to put into the newspaper, the Sanford News, so we had a whole lot of parents wondering where and when for the first days of school.
I looked for that all the time.
Yes, yes, believe me, many did. And many did not find it. So again, Ryan is attentive to exceptionally the details of the children, and so she tracked down, corrected, called, went back over the lists, so we have not lost any children, everybody's getting home safe and sound and on time.
Was that oversight of first student? Was it first student's responsibility to have that in the paper?
That is correct, it is first student's responsibility. And Ryan worked with them right up to the last minute to make sure we knew here where kids needed to be. Unfortunately, parents didn't have that because they didn't have the paper, so they would call here, but at least Ryan then could look up on her chart and get that information to the parents. So it was tough for, you know, a lot of people, you know, you feel like, you know, you're out there in time, you might be out there 20 minutes too early, you might have missed it by three minutes, and that's just a stressful way to start the school day, you know, for parents and kids. But here in the building, our buses have run like clockwork, the kids, the cafeteria, you know, things that make up the outside of academics in a day, you know, have gone very well. You know, teachers had their workshop days before school started, a lot of intermingling, but a lot of small group discussion as to where we're headed with some of the basics that we've been talking about, the common core, teacher evaluation, RTI. So a lot of team discussion about where we are headed, and very powerful discussions, a lot of organization of the schedule for meetings and learning groups to be occurring. And with that, we have got that small amount of funds that I have from state and federal government grants designated primarily to staff development. Staff are taking advantage of this opportunity to go for the workshops that align with where we're headed. I'm excited to say that we just got word from the Main Principals Association that they're offering an RTI workshop, one designated for elementary, one designated for middle school. I called up and I said, okay, I'm both, and I want both, and so, yes. So I'm able to send teachers to both of the conferences with the same presenter and co-author of the book that Teacher Leaders Went With Me in the Spring. So it's more teachers getting the up-to-date information of how to make this work. Very excited. That's happening very soon in October. We have teachers going for mentor training, we have teachers going to the conversations about literacy and literacy common core standards at the state level, we have other teachers raising their hand saying, I wanna go to the science conversations. So I'll be honest, you will see, we all know I'm a stickler for the attendance, I don't like people missing work, however, this is off-site training that is necessary for us to move forward. So you will see an increase probably in the amount of teachers asking for substitutes with my consent. And it's valuable, valuable learning that they're gonna bring back to the rest of the staff. I put in something there about Tracy Scully's quoting contest. There's no prize involved other than recognition of participating and a winning choice, but again, having gone to a common core standards workshop last spring, Tracy learned that understanding quotes, being able to analyze the written word and discuss it is a big part of the common core standards that are coming down. So this is giving students a practice run without the stress of any kind of test that's attached to it, and she has come up with a way with getting the whole staff involved. So that's great for the kids, too. Pressing pause, Gail Wobear has offered to, or graciously accepted my suggestion, that she help us with the pressing pause this year. She's in the computer lab, she's tech savvy, and so she's already sent out to the staff her expectations of having it in print the first week in October. I am encouraging all groups connected to the school, and that includes central office and the school board, to make sure you put in a submission. So it doesn't have to be the school board every time, it doesn't have to be the central office every time, but I think it's really important that we use this tool. It goes online, so it goes on the web, so it's information out to the community, goes home with the kids, the trading post and the post office, you know, let us leave piles of the newsletter there so that we are again communicating as much as possible with the Acton community. So, you know, just letting the community know what we're doing and where we're headed is really important. Mention about the student handbook, sports season, soccer's up and running. I do wanna mention that I have something here to share with the school board, and that is tied to the code of conduct that you have approved as policy. One of the other steps that go along with that, that I'm gonna ask the policy committee to help me finalize and tie together, is the student-level discipline plan. And having talked with Betsy over the last year, I am now also understanding the difference between a procedure and a policy. And the plan should be a procedure. It is, in the dinosaur policy book, a procedure that is 11 pages long. Should a child act up in this school, you have to search for the right grade level, the right behavior, the right consequence, calculate something out, how long it's been. I have passed out to the teachers, and I would share with you something that's two pages long, much more user-friendly, group decided and designed primarily by the teachers. And specialists are involved in having this conversation, too, because they have to discipline at times or manage anywhere from kindergarten to eighth grade, so they should be paired up in twos. They needed something much easier to manage.
Just take two. Just take two.
Take the, every other. So I like this for the school board to look it over, I would like for the policy committee to work with me and see how it aligns with the common cores. So this is how the student, how the teacher says, okay, this student is not demonstrating that common core value, so what do we do about it? How do we keep track of it? I have revised, with Mike's help, the behavior report, so there's a place to record that classroom management level incidents, and there's a place which aligns with the common, with the code of conduct, that something would be reportable on Infinite Campus because it's breaking a law or severe school policy. So again, the rubric is designed so that the teachers can look up one incident regardless of the grade level, but then address a consequence that is developmentally appropriate for the student. By the policy committee looking at this and seeing how it matches and meets with the code of conduct, I think we can give this information a clear, cohesive expectation of how we run business around here when it comes to student behavior and classroom management. It's something parents can follow easily. And there's a piece that needs to be discussed, and that's, you know, when a student has a misbehavior, you know, is there a place for restitution? Is there a place? We now have a reflection piece. When the student gets sent to me, I have grade level appropriate reflection sheets so that the kids think about why they're in trouble, why that behavior was not acceptable. So I, again, I would like to have this be a wrap-up conversation in the next month or two with the policy committee to make sure that the policy and then the procedure itself all has a smooth transition. Just maybe, I'm not reading it, but, I probably means in-school something. What does ISS stand for? School suspension. Okay, so that's, I was right. And so O is just, OSS is out of school. Out of school, correct. And that's, the policy would have to have a cover letter, so those kinds of things are clearly explained. Right, but even a procedure has to be adopted.
Mm-hmm.
So this is for you to look at, and I would like to get rid of completely the 11-page dinosaur. Yeah, I remember that. But, you know, you really did have to search. Oh, yeah. When your kid did something bad. Not that my kids today ain't been bad. Angels at all times.
So this is a procedure plan that will go into the discipline policy.
Okay. It would have an R after it.
Right.
I like it. The teachers worked very hard on it, they really tried to-
It makes sense. It makes sense to have something that's consistent so that if one teacher has a child doing something at one grade level and another teacher has a child doing the same thing at another grade level, the consequences and the procedures would be the same. It kinda takes away the, well, I can, I was allowed to do that in music class, or I was allowed to do that in gym, why can't I do it in here?
Right. And most of the behaviors fall under that classroom management level. You know, it's a rare, you know, we do not have excessive amount of discipline of- of extreme discipline behaviors. And so that's why I had to look at it from the behavior report as well. I want those recorded, I want to know if we have a child having difficulty with those lower-level, but in multiple places. We have to have a way of the teachers communicating that with each other. You know, it might be an issue in gym class, and it might be an issue in recess, but it might not be an issue in the traditional setting. But the teacher in that homeroom still needs to know about the child. And so when we have team meetings and we're saying, oh, this is a problem in multiple locations. Or, you know, the same could be true, that, you know, it's not, it's not the student, but it is the setting that is having challenges. So again, with the team approach of how do we make this work, what can we do better? It's important to have the common language. And again, the specialists, you know, and the other teachers that worked on this, you know, were really clear that this was important to them, that it be streamlined and unified.
How do you spell plagiarizing, is that correct?
Where is it?
Level-two infraction, yeah, under cheating. Is that how you say it?
I would guess it's Ben's hell checked.
This is a draft, this is draft, right? Because my concern, I was looking through this, is sometimes we run across a damaged computer, and occasionally it's, you know, they intended to do it, and other times it's an accident. So I could see some incidences being a level-four incident, and others being more of a level, you know, two or three.
And those, and that's why it's going to be important to have those conversations. Another example of that type of thing would be, you know, kindergarten kid could take somebody else's matchbox car. You know, let's take it what doesn't belong to you, that's not grand theft.
It's collecting.
So, you know, we need to be careful that we are developmentally appropriate as well as, you know, aware of sometimes it's the intent. And this will never, there will never be a procedure which.
That's perfect.
You're right, that's going to fit every situation at all times. But again, in my quest for having things clear and neat and done and packaged, I would like this to be up for consideration as soon as possible.
Okay. Good work.
Thank you. And I do want to just remind everyone that next Tuesday night is the open house. I'm encouraging different community groups to also make sure their faces and names are known. So should school board have that time available? The PTG has their spaghetti breakfast, excuse me, spaghetti supper. Here we are. That would be good.
That's right.
My kids would like if we had pancakes for supper, but. Five o'clock for the spaghetti supper. It is donation-based only, and that includes they'll take donations of like desserts or, you know, money. And then six o'clock is the kickoff gathering in the gymnasium. We'll introduce staff, PTG will talk about things that they're offering for the school year, and then parents will be allowed to visit classrooms. And we have adjusted the ending time to be no later than 7:30. So it gives people time to visit, but it's not meant to be an all-night conference.
I just wanted to commend Trish for making sure that community support groups and community groups were invited to participate because, as you remember from our meetings with Mary Jane McCallman, community input, community understanding of what goes on in your school is essential to establishing a vision and establishing a strategic plan. Thank you. Just as a reminder, calendar-wise, we have a planning team meeting on September 27th at 3 o'clock with Mary Jane, and that's the little group, I'll call it.
What, what day again?
That is the 27th, Thursday, the 27th at 3. That's the group that's already been meeting. That's the group that's been meeting.
Does that include me?
Yep. You're off the hook for that one.
That's why I saved that.
You have passed.
Stay by, y'all by. Then there's a y'all but. And the y'all but is the steering committee, which will be the big group to which you are all invited, is October 11th at 6 o'clock.
What day of the week is that?
That is a Thursday. October 11th.
So this is the vision implies strategic vision and steering committees.
This is the big cajun group. So I need to make sure that you have contacted the people, that you volunteered to contact, and that we have some understanding of how many people we need to prep for in terms of materials. Okay, so Thursday, the Thursday one is at what, 3:30? I mean, the 27th. The 27th is at 3. At 3. And that's the executive committee. Okay. And the steering committee, the big group, is October 11th at 6. I didn't mean to take your time, I'm sorry. And please, please get me the names of the people that you want to be considered for that steering committee, because I want to write to them, I want to talk to them. I want to be their cheerleader.
Betsy clarified, so this was new to me. So you're looking for members to be on the steering committee as well from the community?
Yes.
And to contact you?
And if, actually, part of my responsibility was reaching out into the community. So if you know anybody in the community, anybody on the board that might be interested, let me know, because I have the, all the material that I need to give them a call and ask them if they'd like to participate.
So I wanted to apologize for not having a written report for you. The time between meetings seemed, just caught me off-guard.
I've heard that earlier.
That got me, too, so don't feel bad.
So what I will promise you is a full report regarding what I am doing in terms of the local entitlement. Carleen and I have been working on wrapping up the 2011, 2012 local entitlement. They require a year-end report. So we've been busy crunching the numbers and getting that report ready, and it's about ready to be submitted, just have a couple more things to do. Then I'll move to the application part, and it's, there are really no surprises. It'll be pretty consistent with some subtle changes, consistent with last year's allocation. We don't have much more money, it's a little bit less, actually. So, but I will have a full report on how that money will be allocated. And I've also been working on, so we've been working hard on that, and working on IEP meetings and evaluations over the last few days, believe it or not. Just kind of wrapped up with that today. And then arranging transportation for our out-of-district students. We have arranged for transportation, and I'll give you a full report on how that is, how we're working that through. And again, the local entitlement, and then student enrollment. I'll give you a full report on that.
But she has been incredibly busy with the transition in and new IEPs, and it's been incredibly busy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Carleen? The last few weeks have been really busy getting ready for the new school year. We've had all new staff updated and paperwork. All the financial reports have been prepared and sent into the state. So that's all been taken care of. All staff data has been updated in Med'ams, and will have to be entered into Infinite Campus as well. Right now, the two systems aren't talking to each other. Joy and I, like she said, have been working on the local entitlement grant year-end report, and we have decided that with what we've been through in the last week or so, that we're going to create a new system to make the reporting more streamlined in the future. So make things a lot easier for the breakdown. We received notification yesterday on the 2012-13 Rural Education Achievement Grant. This year, we're getting $19,474. Last year, we got a little over $16,000. Out of that $16,000, we had carryover of $15,705 from last year, and that will be used to pay for the vision and strategic planning that Betsy's been speaking up.
How much did you say we had left over from last year?
$15,705.
Out of $16,000?
Yep. Normally, we use that money to pay for the ed tech in the computer lab, but we had ed job money that needed to be spent. So we felt that that was the better use of the funds last year, and we get to carry this over. This money doesn't have to be spent until December of 2013. So we'll have this for a year if we need it, but this is going to pay for Mary Jane McCallum.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions for Carleen, or for any of them, for that matter?
I have one question. Going back to something early about the school with the, notifying the paper, Students First, what, First Student?
Pressing.
Oh, First.
Oh, First and the Bus.
The Bus Route.
That's the name of the bus company.
Oh, I didn't know that, so. Okay.
Usually they have the bus routes done in enough time to submit the routes to, like Sanford News, whatever, and parents can look it up on the newspaper at what time their bus is coming through.
And we didn't get that information from them in time.
Right, we, well.
They didn't get it in the paper.
They didn't get it in the paper.
Oh, so they're responsible.
It's their responsibility, right.
Okay.
Right. So they were, Ryan was on the phone and via email right up until school starting, making sure that our kids were going to be ready, you know, at the right spot at the right time.
I didn't know the name of the company, I didn't know what they were.
I'm sorry. Can I speak? She was also calling for a student on a daily basis to get that information and was a little frustrated.
They have a new office manager this year who hasn't had a lot of experience in route design and understanding the need of the rapidity with which those things need to get to parents. So it's a work in progress. But it is, yes, the same company that Sanford uses. It's a huge company, I mean, it's a conglomerate, they've bought out. All over the country. Yeah, they've bought out three or four other companies. They print in Sanford's. Do they know we're enacted? Okay.
This is part of my own ignorance, but, so I know they published the bus routes in the paper. How come nowhere else, like website or anything?
Do they have a website?
I don't believe they have one.
They don't have a website. If we had that information, we could have put it on a website.
We just don't have it.
But we didn't have it. They have to create the, I'll tell you. They don't watch out, Ryan will do it for them, and I'll tell you. Every kid will be home at the exact time, within seconds. And I know other districts, you know, struggle, I know, you know, Noble has struggled with, you know, the timing of things. But it's just such a, especially with kids who are not used to riding the bus, you know, if it's a drastic change from a year-before schedule, it just adds the jitters to those first days that.
No, yeah, no, that's why I asked, because a couple of parents did ask me who have kindergartners. And they don't, it was, it's new information for me that another company is in charge of that, so. It's useful, it's good to know, so, thanks.
Pass the buck.
Oh, that's it.
That's it.
Well, that's the only bus that's coming around. We've tried to make, there's nobody else around.
Well, I mean, we, a long time ago, we had a contract with a wonderful company out of New Hampshire called The Provider. And the issue with The Provider was that they serviced our kids in Sanford via vans, and you're not allowed to use vans in transporting kids in the state of Maine. You have to have a yellow bus.
Well, that might be, but I'm talking about acting. I mean, there's been no one. I think there was at one time a company in New Hampshire that had put in a bid, but there was.
For example, Leyd Law was bought out by First Student.
So it was a monopoly.
And it was Marinale.
It's a monopoly.
Yeah. They were bought out by First Student.
Yeah.
But we put, you know, when it comes time for our transportation contract, we put it out there to have different companies bid on it. And they've always been the one, the last few years, they've been the one that has come in with the best deal for us. And particularly with the increases in fuel, they haven't put a surcharge in our contract, which means, you know, if the price goes up, they're going to eat it. Yeah, it's been a very good deal for us.
They also pay us rent to leave their buses in the parking lot.
Who came along and graded that, is that you?
Oh, I did that. Try to do it two or three times a year, anyway.
And just, we're talking about transportation, did you hear at the high school level in Sanford, every Thursday they're going to start late, the high school students? That must be a nightmare for parents.
Sanford's doing that, too?
Thursday morning.
Marshalls is on Thursdays, Noble's on Wednesdays, I.
Starting late.
I'm not a big fan.
But how is that going to affect our kids getting to school?
We need to meet and consult.
So we're just, I mean, this, I couldn't believe I found, you know, this came, I don't know. The kids were talking about Wednesday or something, they didn't even know when they didn't have to go to school or did have to go to school.
Well, your elementary kids are on a later start. Your K to A kids here are on a later, are on the same late start that the Sanford Elementary kids are on. It's the high school that's on an hour early start. So it still has to work itself through.
No, but basically, our kids are going to get to the school at 10, well, our kids, they were getting to school at 7:00 or something. So now, on that day.
Information.
I got a letter that came home.
And it's supposed to start right away?
Probably in two weeks, is it?
Can I ask you a question? Does that mean that the bus arrives?
Well, that's what I'm worried about, the bus.
Bus arrives, and there is no, no.
No, they're going to, see, I think it's a work in progress. Supposedly, if our kids get there early, they can sign up for different things, but you don't know what those different things are, because I think they have to get volunteers or the teachers to say, oh, I'll do this. And so now, the bus, I guess, is going to come the same exact time. But what I'm saying to you is, our kids get there an hour before school starts, as it is.
Why don't we do this? Why don't Tricia and I contact David Theoharides and First Student and find out exactly what the progression and planning is, and we'll report it back to you.
What's the purpose of that to begin with?
It's staff development.
Oh.
For the teachers.
So they have a ton of early release dates, and now every Thursday?
Yes. Morning. And the problem that we run into here is that, the reason that our kids have to go so early anyway is because the buses, the transport acting kids have to take care of the high school kids, then they come back and pick up the elementary kids.
No, I know, that's the reason.
That's why, so that's.
But now on Thursday, our kids are going to sit there for two, good luck. A high school kid, two and a half hours in there.
No, depending on the time, I mean, it could be, always be set up in a situation where on Thursday, the high school run gets done second.
Right, but that's not, you know, if we don't discuss this, that won't happen.
Well, this is just newest to me, because I don't have one in high school, so I haven't received that letter, but, I mean, I would think that we should have been notified well ahead of time.
Well, I think we've, I think we've got a solution in that Betsy and Trish will talk with, they'll deal with First Student and with the superintendent in Sanford, and we'll come up with something that's going to, they'll at least get back to us and let us know what's going on. Absolutely. As soon as possible. So be watching your emails for that. Facility director report.
Now, you'll see that my report is also very brief, and I'm in the same boat as Joy. I kind of got caught off-guard with last month's meeting being moved forward a week. I just listed some basic, you know, some bullet items that I've been working on with Betsy, and would report to you tonight that both new hires are doing rather well. They're getting acclimated to the school. We had our first custodial staff meeting yesterday. Things are going well. And as I said last month, I was anxious to get people back in the building, and I got my wish, everybody's back, things are going relatively smoothly. Tracy Scully is doing a great job with the soccer program. Practice started yesterday. We put new nets on the goals this year. I've been working on the field quite a bit. And I would like to take up the rest of my airtime tonight under the long-term planning report. We met tonight and went over quite a bit of information, and I'll be sharing more with you when we get to that point in the agenda.
Okay. And Michael?
I didn't have a report written up for you guys, this meeting took me by surprise, but.
So we're second team.
I just want to remind our administrative team that the school meeting always meets on the second Tuesday of the month at 6 o'clock.
No, I've always.
Not always, last month was seven. Do everything out of the way.
All right, blame the new guy, okay. We do.
And I'm going to send out a reminder.
We do, we do understand, though, that the, the opening of school is very busy. And this is just exactly one week from the opening day, so.
Take comfort knowing that we were very busy, that's why it didn't happen.
But things did run smoothly. Everybody, the kids were using the computer lab day one. Seventh and eighth grade were looking to use the computers immediately. So technology was working smoothly. There was concern about the front door, we discussed it last month. Next Tuesday, after school, Southern Cabling. Peter will be here to install the keypad. That'll permit the door to unlock from the outside when you come in. Next week, well, on Tuesday, the same day, around the same time, we'll also be upgrading our phone system software. So the phones will be down briefly for that. But everything's going smooth, everything's going great. I've been working on Infinite Campus data, making sure that the schedule is literal. When you look up kids, a student in Infinite Campus, you'll see exactly where they'll be at what time. It's hard to do, being a K through eight school, you know, middle school usually has like block one, block two, block three, block four. But here, I have to do like the whole day in the schedule. So that's been done. And Ryan is pleased that she can find a kid, you know, like, just like that, by looking them up and knowing where they are, being able to call them. So I've been doing a lot of Infinite Campus data and making sure everything's running smooth for the first day of school. And then everybody seems happy and content with how things are going. That's about it.
Well, the keypad you're talking about will allow staff to get in without having to buzz in, is that what it will be?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
To unlock the door.
Yeah. Only on the front door?
Yes, just that one that's being locked magnetically. So if anybody comes in first thing before maintenance or anybody comes in the back doors and disarms the alarm, you can come in through there, unlock the door, disarm the alarm and do whatever you've got to do.
Okay, sure, we'll get an explanation about it. I will clear explanation about it at our October meeting. Because I can see everybody over here going, doing what?
It'll make, it'll make sense once it's in place.
I'm sure, well.
I'll just always make sure I come here when someone's already here. That's what I would do.
Can I have a motion to accept all staff reports, please?
I'll make a motion to accept all staff reports and verbal, and.
Well, verbal and written, okay.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded that all staff reports be accepted. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five and all. Okay, committee in standing and special committees now. We'll, we'll start with the long-term planning committee if you have something that you want to share from that.
Yes, I said I would.
Mary is going to.
Speak on that.
Okay. I can find a piece of paper here.
I know, it's. Basically, today, we looked at the exterior needs. We actually took a little tour. And we're going to be coming up with a five-year plan. And it's going to be like a rolling five-year plan. So once we get things done, we'll just, there'll always be a five-year plan.
And that'll be in concert with the strategic plan?
Yes. And we're going to be looking at things that need to be done from, say, a more health safety aspect and down to maybe the cosmetic aspects or whatever, things that we may want to do. We're looking, the first biggest thing that we have to look at for capital improvement is there's a culvert in the back that is rusted out on the bottom. And it's, to me, it looks dangerous and I wouldn't want it collapsing. So I think that's something we should take care of. If anybody goes out there and looks, they'll know what I'm talking about. You know, it's the big one where the washout took place. The whole bottom is rusted out and it's also looking like an oval shape instead of the round shape. And it's metal. So, you know, we were thinking, I know there's other materials out there that I feel will last lots of years, like plastic never goes away, right? So that hard plastic culvert or even, I don't know, I thought concrete would be cheaper, but if you say no.
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 Was that, is that one that was, was that put in new when we had the washout?
No.
No.
That was not replaced during the Patriot Day storm.
Okay.
Fixed, no.
It, it's aging, but I mean, it's totally rusted out. You see rocks on the bottom, I mean, so the rust is just going to continue up the sides until it collapses. And that's where our children, you know, use the field, they go back there. Well, not just children, right? I went back there, so I could have fallen, but anyway. So that's a safety issue and I think that needs to be taken care of ASAP. We're thinking also of looking at anything else on the exterior, such as sidewalks that are crackling and crumbling, dangerous issues like that, we want to take care of. The parking lot, if it was sealed, because that's been a long time coming, we need to do that. And like it was mentioned, it, it, when it's sealed, it also helps the snow melt better, quicker. And, you know, so it's less ice. And so that's a safety issue. But, you know, so we're looking at, at it from different angles. And the other thing we want to do is possibly ask this committee to put fifty thousand into the capital fund to start it like that. We need to start putting money away for capital improvements and have it there. And if we have that money this year, I think some of it should go there. But then on a regular basis, I think we need to put ten, twenty thousand, something like that, every year into a capital. So we have it, so we're not going to the town and asking for bulk amount of money, because we should be able to budget for that type of stuff. Like any house, you try to put money aside in case, you know, your roof's going to go or the boiler's going to go, same thing. And then next month, we're going to be looking at interior things.
Okay.
But I don't know if we should be voting on, I don't, you know, we'd need information first on how much it would cost to replace that culvert. But I think it needs to be done.
I think, no, I think part of what we're looking at is, like we discussed at the last meeting, we looked at the garage out back. That's a fairly decent sized space, it's not really being properly utilized. And we've been putting that off for five years, six years to get that done. So part of moving, what the long-term planning committee is asking for is, because we haven't put money towards capital improvement in several years, is to request that we move fifty thousand dollars out of the, under the designated fund balance this year and twenty-five thousand dollars built into the budget to go into a capital improvement each year thereafter for projects. Because there are a couple of big things right now that need to be done. That building, if we're going to get it done before winter, I think we need to get started on it. Because it's a process, they're going to have to jack it, of course. They, this can be pretty hard to be working when the school in session. Andy and I and Mary have discussed it, we're probably looking somewhere as eight to ten thousand dollars to do that project. So out of that fifty thousand dollars, what we'd like to do is authorize the use of no more than ten thousand dollars at this point to lift that building, have a foundation and board, put a door in there, replace the windows, get it up to standards so we can use it for storage.
So are you looking to have an estimated building plan for that for the next meeting?
Yes, I'll have that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we, we, you know, we need to get, get things rolling on that, because it would be nice to have it done before winter. The other thing is that culvert, I didn't realize how bad it was to, when I back there and looked at it. I assumed that was replaced back with the Patriot Day storm, but as Andy reminded me, it wasn't. That color's in desperate shape of needing to be replaced. I'm not too concerned with pedestrian traffic or even a small machine going over it. But it is, the bottom of it's gone, there's nothing there. The sides of it are rotted and it's shaped kind of like a football, so that whole thing is collapsing. I think we need to seriously look at that before winter sets in. And that's what we'd like to do, to get a jumpstart out of that fifty thousand dollars that, you know, if we can put it aside in a capital improvement fund.
So I have that listed as an item for the next agenda, estimated costs.
I'll have, I'll have estimated costs on both projects, the culvert and the building.
Can that be part of a road commissioners' project?
Well, it goes out to bid, no?
I don't know, it's going to, it's going to depend on how the estimate, you know, what the estimated cost is. If the estimated cost is above five thousand, then we'll have to go out to bid.
Well, like, we discussed, one of, one of the things that may save us in cost in that is to get estimates for doing the, the physical labor, digging and replacing the culvert and seeing about us purchasing the material ourselves. I mean, as far as any material, the fill wouldn't be a lot. We have our own, on premises, yeah.
On premises, yeah.
But getting, getting back to the, the request of moving the fifty thousand for capital improvement and establishing long-term financial needs as far as putting twenty-five thousand dollars each year into that account, we looked at an, an older plan that ran from two thousand to two thousand and ten. And back when there was money being pumped into capital improvement, there was substantially more than twenty-five thousand dollars per year being set aside for capital improvement. It ranged anywhere from.
Forty thousand.
There was one year it was up to like eighty thousand, but that probably was the ball fields and, and all that. But anyways, twenty-five thousand dollars is probably a conservative number. But, you know, like Richard said, fifty thousand to establish the account. And then depending on how the budget goes and, you know, how things look elsewhere in the, in the overall operating budget, you know, even if we can only throw ten thousand dollars at it in a lean year or however it works, you know, I do feel the need that we need to reestablish the capital improvement account. And, you know, once we have that five-year perpetual plan in place, I think that it's in the best interest of the school, long-term.
So would someone on the long-term planning committee want to make a motion that we establish that account?
I'd like to make a motion that we establish the capital improvement fund, starting with fifty thousand dollars out of the, the undesigned fund balance and place on the budget a twenty-five thousand dollars per year added to.
And we would review that at the time that the budget's done.
That money is to be spent, used under the consensus of the school board, what we feel is priorities, that the board would make the decisions as to what then needs to be spent on.
Well, you talked about twenty-five thousand dollar each year. I know, but I'm just saying.
But the motion is to consider that at budget time.
Right, right, that's right, because we don't know, maybe we could.
No, we can't promise that we can, we can do it, but I want to have it built into the budget so that, because the building has been let go as far as capital improvements. Other than what's broken and has to be fixed for the past several years. We ran into a situation when the well went dry, had, fortunately, there was money there to back us up. You know, we do have kind of a unique system for septic. We have a failing leach field, you're talking a few hundred thousand dollars could be replaced. So you just never know, and we have to have some money set aside.
Yep, oh yeah, I'm just saying, you don't want to commit to twenty, just twenty, we can change.
Well, I'll.
Yeah, I mean, we can change, we can change the amount, adjust the amount as.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we establish a capital improvement account by transferring fifty thousand dollars from the undesigned fund. What else do you have on that motion? Did you write it down?
On the undesigned fund balance and to consider twenty-five thousand dollars a year to be added to this account to be spent, spent to use under the vision of the school committee.
So clarify, fifty thousand and then twenty-five thousand are just?
The fifty thousand is a done deal, we vote on it and how that will get moved.
So the other one's to consider for the next budget.
Consider twenty-five thousand dollars a year to be added to the balance.
Consider, yeah.
How much is in the undesigned fund balance? For me, it's.
Five hundred thousand.
There's forty, you'd be problematic.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, or any further discussion? All those in favor, so signify. Five and all. Okay. Policy Committee?
Well, we met and that was my last meeting to, technically. Kevin, it's all yours from here in. And that, that's what we got together, those job descriptions. And as we can see, there's going to be a lot of other policies, those ones that the main law changes. So there'll be a lot to work on, but hopefully, we'll have all these job descriptions by next month.
It would be, ready to be voted on, hopefully. We will have some to vote on next month. And Kevin, in terms of meeting time, it's usually been on Tuesday morning before school board meeting. So we usually meet at what, eight o'clock?
In the morning.
In the morning, yeah.
But, you know, whatever your scheduling, Jeanette, works out.
Yeah, I was going to ask that at the end, I mean, I don't, we can decide, I mean.
You know, at the end of the meeting, we chat and pick some dates.
Yeah, we can figure that out, yeah.
So I'd like to be part of that. And right now, my schedule is full days on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And mornings on Wednesday, if there's no staff meetings. And delayed start on Wednesday, if there are afternoon staff meetings. Okay? Any other?
I would, I would suggest maybe that you just ask Holly in wrapping up these job descriptions, if she has a job description already written up.
No, we got it from Holly.
I sent it to her.
Oh, okay, so that's good.
Is it possible to get these electronic?
Yeah.
I'm a digital guy.
Kevin, can you make sure that you check in with?
Carly?
With Carly. Because we've had some email messages sent to you that have bounced back.
Yeah. Yeah, use the acting one. I've got an acting one now. Because I started getting emails before I had an account. It's simple for me if I just, I've got a separate acting elementary account, so that'd be good. Perfect.
Is that all, sir?
Okay, is there any unfinished business?
Thank you.
Finished business from anybody? New business, any new, any new business?
New business, no.
No, no new business, no unfinished business. So I will ask for a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session regarding personnel, MSRA four oh five six A.
And Kevin is the second. And what? Kevin's second.
I'll do my first second.
All right. All those in favor?
This is personnel, right?